New Hampshire, Boston, and then there was an officiated wedding way up in.
And Donna?
Yeah.
That's her comment.
In New Hampshire or in New York?
Shane?
Oh, yeah.
Thanks for coming, man.
I'm sure Shane's.
Yeah.
Cool. That's what it's nice about. And like on stop. That works.
Shall we proceed?
I think we're ready. I think, yeah, we have everybody here.
Yeah, so I'd like to welcome everyone to the work session of the Board of Trustees for the Town of Villarista. This is September twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three, and the time is six o'clock. The purpose of this work session is to learn about the two thousand twenty-four budget in the big picture. So our Treasurer Philip Hackett will be presiding.
Thank you all. Thank you all for joining us, those even staff that came out to help present. So, yeah, we're at that stage where we get to kick off our two thousand twenty-four budget. And as Mayor Faye said, we're gonna, we're gonna stay pretty high level tonight. But the objective here is to, you know, share with you a bit about the process timeline, some of the key assumptions that staff has put into the draft budget, and then let the department heads share with you pretty briefly, you know, each one will be about five to ten minutes, what's going on in their area, so you can kind of get a better understanding of what they're specifically looking at. And again, it's, it's, it's an opportunity for you all to start at a higher level instead of just receiving the, the fine print, all the accounts and all the numbers, to kind of start at that higher level. Because next meeting, October tenth, will be the formal presentation of the budget with all that detail. And that will be the opportunity where we present that to the public as well. And we kind of kick off the series of public hearings from here on out until December. So we should have plenty of time, so feel free to ask questions as we go, and we'll jump in here. There we go. Okay. So in your packet, all of these slides, probably easier to see on your computer in the packet, but I think slide or page four is where it starts. I wanted to reiterate basically how our account funds work and how revenue sources flow into those funds. So this first slide is a, is a look at our general fund, which is primarily operating, but we also tie our capital improvement fund to the general fund. So this, this illustrates at the top, it shows in the gray boxes, the, the revenues, ongoing revenue sources for the general fund. So our town sales tax, two percent of our total town sales tax goes into our general fund, and that, that makes up roughly fifty-two percent of the total revenue for the, for the general fund. So by far, our largest revenue source ongoing. And then we get a, a contribution or an allocation, I should say, from the county that kind of mirrors that from within their sales tax that comes to us. In addition to that, we have things like property tax. We do have a mill levy. So those together make about another thirty-five percent. And then the rest is a combination of interest on our accounts, fees, donations, and typically small operating grants. Then what we do is we, we prioritize within their operating first. So that's everything from our staffing, wages and benefits, to utilities, supplies, you know, small ongoing things like that. Once we have that number, then we, we kind of see what's remaining. We keep an eye on that because that would make up what we transfer to the capital improvement fund for our capital projects that, again, are tied to the general fund. So that's, that's things, that's all of our departments except for airport and water. So by and large, our, our majority of our departments go pull from that capital improvement fund. So general fund transfers to that each year. But we also pull money from the Conservation Trust Fund, which is lottery proceeds that go towards trails, open space, recreation. It's, it's roughly thirty-six thousand a year, so it's, it's a minimal amount, but Shane and his team make use of it. And now we do have the special revenue fund tied to retail marijuana sales. So that's another fund that we have the opportunity to transfer for capital projects out of the capital improvement fund. Moving on to a few other funds. So our street fund has the other half percent from our total self, our town sales tax that's dedicated to street, street improvements, paving, but also streetscape things like trees and sidewalks, curb gutter, and things like that. Again, lottery proceeds go into the Conservation Trust Fund, and then we have that five percent special revenue or special sales tax on retail marijuana that goes into that fund. For our water fund, that's primarily our, our monthly water rates. We have a plethora of other things that go in there, such as grants. Right now, we have another loan proceed, loan proceeds going into there for our water treatment plant, interest, things like that. So pretty dynamic fund. And then we also have our stormwater fund that does a very small sliver of, of revenue that comes in from our monthly water statements or, or water bills where residential and commercial customers pay into that. Our airport fund is primarily from fuel sales, fees for usage, things like that, and then, and then obviously grants, FAA, CDOT, for larger capital projects. Any question about our funds? Happy to take questions or go dive offline if anybody wants to look at some of that in more detail. Going to our timeline for budget. We are right on time, thankfully. By statute, we're supposed to present our, our draft budget publicly by October fifteenth. We will, we'll do that at the next meeting on October tenth. And then the meeting, second meeting in October, the, the two meetings in November, we will plan to have work sessions before the regular meetings for our advisory boards and other community members to come in and share, you know, what's going on in their area and, and kind of highlight requests that they've put in for, for the budget next year. So that'll get the board the opportunity to have some discussion with our advisory boards and possibly some other community groups. I do want to highlight that we've got a new little wrinkle in, in our upcoming schedule, and that is what's going to be on the ballot statewide. Senate Bill three, three oh three, or Prop HH, as you probably are seeing it out and about right now, pros and cons to that. But essentially, that's going to have impacts on our property tax and mill, mill levy calculations. And Mayor Faye and I attended a meeting a few weeks back with the county, kind of talked with all the county entities that have property tax to start talking about but how their property taxes are looking and potential impacts of HH. I, I will say, early on, it doesn't look like the town's going to be affected one way or another for next year's calculation, but it does change all of our numbers, and it puts a burden on our, on our county assessor. If that, if that does pass in November, they have to redo all the numbers and reissue all of their certified numbers to all entities to then do their own calculations. So there's a potential where we may have to have a special meeting in December to approve our town mill levy calculation after December twelfth. I'm hoping that we'll avoid that because I've got two versions of that calculation ready. So hopefully, we won't have to do that, but it's tough that that might happen. We'll find out more, depending on what the voters do. And I'm happy to talk about HH during the budget process, too, if you all have questions about that. But Tabor already limits the town's property taxes so much that we won't be affected. So this slide here, one of the things we, we attempt to do is, again, kind of start focusing on that high level first, looking at our town vision statement. So these, these themes between environment, water, economic vitality, infrastructure, and community, those are from the board's strategic plan and, and the overarching vision for the town. So what we attempt to do through our, our spring planning with the board is capture what those high-level priorities or concerns or opportunities are so that we can see about aligning projects to those, to address those. This was a bit of a unique year with some, with some shuffling in staff and things. So we didn't really have that traditional spring planning. However, I think I've captured what's been and what was discussed this year as, as high, high-level priorities. So if you see something on here that you want to discuss or we're missing something, by all means, let's talk about it. That can be talked about throughout the budget process. But this is really meant to be a guide for staff to say, hey, let, let's make sure we're, we're putting some of our resources towards these things. The one thing that I didn't get on this, on this slide is continue planning with Town Hall East and this block right here with Boys and Girls Club going in. We've also recognized that we, we have split our Town Hall staff between Town Hall and Town Hall East out of the, out of the need for space. I think that's off to a pretty solid start. But one of the things that the board did discuss earlier this year was recognizing that, that this building, this room specifically, is, is highly used to the point where court is a bit clumsy at times, our board meetings are sometimes hard to set up and tear down timely. So that, that future planning for space and doing that in a financially sustainable way is still a priority. So, you know, call that town campus planning, but that, that's certainly something that needs to continue as we move along.
I have a quick question, just on the, the EverStarSure connectivity section there. We talked about our budget. Wouldn't the CDOT intersection stuff come out of, like, CDOT's budget? Or, or what are we, are we like matching that or?
That's correct. So the construction is coming out of CDOT's funding this year. However, the town is contributing to the design phase. So out of our street fund, we are contributing sixty thousand. Sean and I don't anticipate spending out of the street fund for that project with the caveat that there might be some enhancements that the town desires for connectivity, like, say, sidewalks, just to make sure the pieces make sense once CDOT is finished.
Gotcha.
So I think there is that opportunity that we may contribute a little for additional things that town wants to see, but the primary funding is coming from CDOT.
To piggyback on that, does the county have anything to do with things like that as well? Like, that's?
No.
No? Okay.
No. Not within town limits. If there was something that, you know, is maybe hidden county that impacts both county and town, yes. And a good example of that is Baylor Steel Intersection. That would be a little bit different discussion because that technically is in county. And, and so there might be opportunity to partner with the county on that. All right. Lots of, lots of words on this one. Hopefully, you've looked at best on your own computers. But I just want to hit quickly some, some of the concepts within our budget and, and some of the things, you know, early on to highlight to the board. So one, we always take a structurally balanced approach with our budget. And in simple terms, that means reoccurring revenues cover our reoccurring expenses, including capital maintenance, capital projects. Maybe not the largest capital projects, but again, mainly those maintenance, maintenance-type capital items. However, we do have the concept of carryover projects. That happens quite a bit. Shane's smiling at me because Rec likes, likes to do that too sometimes, but it's, it's just out of necessity, right? We start a project in one year, we have to carry over into the, into the next year. That can look a little goofy within the budget because, let's say, we had budgeted one hundred thousand dollars in two thousand twenty-three, and we didn't spend that money, but it was budgeted. That essentially is going to fall to fund balance and increase our fund balance at the end of the year. If the board desires to carry that over into the next year, we will show that expense in the budget, more than likely that will exceed the revenue for that year. So we'll show spending into fund balance. It can look like deficit spending, even if that's not what we're necessarily doing. So that concept of carryover is very common. It's, it's pretty much a necessity, given our larger projects. So what we'll try to do throughout the budget process is highlight to you, yeah, the bottom line might look like a negative number, but here are the carryover items that essentially are, are, are making that up. So inflation is still high. It's, thankfully, it's coming down a bit, but it's still relatively high. Just under five percent, it looks like right now, but from year to year. So what that means is pretty much everything in our budget's more expensive. Utilities are up, cost of capital projects are up, wages and benefits are up, right? So continue that focus on trying to pay our staff competitively, retain our top talent. So we have loaded in the draft budget an average of seven percent increase across the board, which is substantial. That's no minor thing. But if we look at five percent cost of living, just to keep up with that part of it, that leaves two percent merit average across the board. So just be aware of that. Some of our department heads may share with you a little bit of their perspectives on that matter, but that's, that's what's in the budget right now. And it's certainly open to discussion with the board at any time during the budget process on that. We are looking at a little bit of additional staffing, but not much compared to the last couple of years. So I just wanted to highlight there, Rec is taking an existing part-time position, moving to full-time. Public Works is looking to add a couple of seasonal parks positions to help keep up in the summertime. And PD is looking at a part-time code enforcement to help cover on weekends and off-hours because that, that role is stretched and oftentimes, we need it available when it's not business hours. So that's in there. Chaffey Fire Protection, one of our newer arrangements in two thousand twenty-one was to outsource our fire services with Chaffey Fire. That's been a very successful partnership. It has saved the town money, both in capital and operating costs. But this year, we have a little bit of an interesting scenario where Chaffey Fire is a district that's not limited by Tabor in the same way that town is. So potentially, their mill rate, their revenue will go up in conjunction with the rising property values within town limits. So right now, we're looking at a close to a forty-two percent increase in their annual bill to the town, which in one year, that's, that's substantial. At the same time, the town's property taxes are bound by about seven percent growth, and our sales taxes are up by about seven percent. So a little bit out of sync, but it is in conjunction with the, what would be paid to them by property taxes within the town of BB. So it's probably worth some discussion with the fire district to understand. They were talking about needing additional revenue. Is this an appropriate amount? Could they take a smaller mill rate? So I've kind of prepped them that I think that's a topic that we all want to dig into a little bit.
Would that also be affected by HH? If it reduces the valuation of property?
It would. It would. I don't know what that looks like for them, but yes. They're, they would be one that would probably be impacted by HH because it would reduce, reduce a little bit.
Is this different than their proposed, they were proposing a ballot measure, weren't they?
They were until the property values went up forty-two percent.
Now they don't even need to.
That's the, that's the discussion, right? Is you were identifying that, they were identifying that they needed additional revenue. With this happening across the county, what does that look like now?
Right. So are they looking that forty-two percent is gonna, is that just for town limits or is this across Chaffey County?
Forty-two is representing in town, but, but it's the same, it's comparable across the county.
Right.
Yeah. So all of, all of the, wherever they're servicing and taxing as a district, it would be up relatively the same amount.
Still much cheaper than if we had our own fire department.
It is. Clearly, yes. But, okay. Moving on, our community grant allocation reminder that just, that's, that's based on projected revenues. So right now, that's a little over sixty thousand dollars towards that. And then when you net all that down and you start looking at what's left, we're right around three hundred thousand dollars available to transfer to the capital fund. We're, we started with a one hundred thirty thousand dollar transfer to the airport fund. I don't know yet if that balances the airport fund. That's something Jack and, and Chander and I will be working on next week before the October tenth meeting. And then we have to balance all the numbers. We've got about twenty thousand dollars that I'm, I'm calling for board priorities, things that might come up that we're not seeing yet, which could include more capital transfer or airport transfer. All right. Sorry, I need to get, I need to wrap this up. Sales tax projection, quickly. I am looking at, we're looking at similar, actually same as what we've done in, in recent years, a three percent increase. It's conservative, but considering that we've, we've gone from this, you know, five-year, six-year period of double-digit, double-digit year-to-year growth, this year, we're seeing seven percent. A lot of that, as we've talked about before, can be attributed to inflation and, and costs going up on goods driving property taxes. So I think three percent is a solid number to work with. It's, it's conservative. We, we could certainly still be a bit above that, but I'd rather be that way than fighting to, to cut stuff.
Are, are those numbers corrected for inflation? Do they account for inflation? Are they just?
They're not. They don't.
Year dollars.
That's just year-to-year dollars.
Okay, so I mean, the corrected for inflation is not quite as dramatic.
Right. Correct. And there was a title in there that, that two thousand thirteen should be two thousand twenty-three, seven percent annual growth through July. So again, that's, we're kind of seeing seven percent, but the cost of doing everything goes up at least that. So our capital, money available for capital is squeezed right now in our draft budget. I'll say that early look at it, I think we can have a viable plan next year, three hundred thousand transfer to capital. It does worry me long-term, though, because we're going to have other capital needs that kind of stack up. So I, I don't like that number ongoing. Next year, I think it works. Right now is what we're seeing. But hopefully, we'll be able to push that number up as we go through the budget cycle. All right. I'll get to, okay. Quickly wrapping up my part of this, so general administration. It includes nine budget departments. You can see at the top there making up of seven full-time employees, two part-time, and now two contractors. So lots of different departments. Some highlights this year, website redesign led by our clerk's department, getting the new police station wrapped up, guys, wrapped up? Just about there. Ninety-nine percent. But getting the new police station up and going, getting Town Hall East cleared out and ready for staff to move in. And then our, our transition over to Orion for our IT services has been very successful. We've been happy with that and a little bit of swizzle and staffing. So I'm pretty proud of these areas this year. Going into next year, some of the main things really focused is going to be on the April election and then continue discussion about how, if, how and if we coordinate with the county for elections beyond that. But certainly, an election is a big task, a big lift for the staff in Town Hall. And then the other thing we are looking at, migrating our Tyler system, which covers everything from our, our water billing to our human resources. We're looking at moving that system to the cloud as early as next year to kind of reduce our on-premise server security type things. I won't go into detail there, but we've been eyeing that for a while. And then we will be in a single audit, audit, which we haven't done ever. I don't know, man, at least in my time here, we've never done a single audit. But because we have so many large federal grants on our books, we have a, a more in-depth audit process coming out next year. Yes.
I don't want to derail this too early on a presentation, but the, on the general fund section for sales tax revenue coming from the county, just going back to the, you know, question of, especially looking at what's on the proposed agenda for next session. But as we've moved towards, you know, keep county, county, town, town, and pushing more density kind of on the ridge of town, but not within town limits, how are they going to calculate that sales tax distribution? How we need to think about that impact for our roads and police and everybody else? If there's a way we can kind of start thinking about that a little bit during this process or when we're talking about annexation and all that.
Sure.
That was one mention now.
Yes.
Next time.
Yeah. The day of the Lord. Fair enough. I mean, it's, it's an interesting calculation based on reg, car registration and things like that. So it seems like the county may have some flexibility in how they do that to account for changes and growth patterns, so.
Yeah, and that's because if we're going to have like a large development right on the outside, they're registered outside of town or county, and so does that not count into it, even though they're going to be using your services for it? And so, yeah, just anything on that would be great.
Okay, that's, thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Dean, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor Trustees. I'm just going to talk really fast. I don't want to cut in anyone else's time. So there's a brief summary about the BDPD. Right now, we're fully staffed. We've got thirteen officers. That includes myself, two sergeants, Commander Garcia, who's here tonight, an investigator, aid in patrol. We have two administrative assistants. And last year, we took a code enforcement under our umbrella. This year, we also gained a volunteer officer, a reserve officer, and then a police chaplain. That's volunteer position, so it's not paid. Let's see, there's some of our duties. Some of the special teams we're on involve K-9 Drug Task Force, Chaffey County Combined Tactical Team. Our highlights in two thousand twenty-three, the biggest one, obviously, was the move into the new building, which we were super excited about. We're really happy about that. We've got a couple of grants this year, DUI overtime grant, a grant from the Fentanyl Investigations Grant, a crime scene trailer. Some of the challenges have been, obviously, recruitment and retention. I think that's been our biggest challenge. The move has been a challenge. It's a positive forward movement, but it's also super hard to keep doing your job. And, you know, hey, where did we put this? It's in a box somewhere, so. But we're getting there. Like Philip said, we're probably ninety-nine percent. Projects and key changes, like I said, moving into the new building. Orion Integration Services, they, they've been super good for us for setting up a lot of the new technology at the PD. A lot of us have really leaned on them heavily, and we've got some new equipment and, like, even like. like even like the carts for these display monitors, they came and put those together for us, which I'm not sure is their job, but they did that for us, which was really nice. Um, they've been a huge help with all of this. Um, you go to the next slide.
I've got the control, sorry. A little downer. There you go.
Um, challenges and opportunities, uh, staffing and retention again is a big challenge. Um, issues and concerns related to that overtime, I think our overtime budget, we spent about fifty thousand as of August uh first on overtime. Um, and that can lead to officer safety issues, um, issues such as officer burnout, uh mental and physical fitness. Um, when we're working on so many hours. Um, we're never asked to do more as the police. I think that's true of all town employees. It seems like the more the town grows, that all of the town entities are asked to do more. And, um, we try to maintain a good level of service, quality of service, um, and it can be a challenge, especially with staffing issues. Um, code and nuisance issues are requiring a lot of attention. Grant is doing a really fantastic job. He's helping us in so many areas. Um, but with the nuisance issues, for example, I know we talked at the last uh BOT meeting about like those ordinance. A lot of that's gonna happen on weekend nights and the officers have been handling that, which is fine. Um, but I think having a part-time code enforcement officer can be a good tool to help out on the weekends and cover some of those issues. Um, and there's a ton of other code issues, you know, dogs at large, all kinds of things. Um, we need to replay the, replace the code enforcement and investigations vehicle. I'm gonna let Commander Garcia talk about that in just a second. Um, and I do wanna look at employee salaries. Um, we're in a environment where we have a bigger agency that pays better in our backyard, the sheriff's office. And they start about seven thousand more than a BVPD officer. Um, we believe the town has been very generous to us with our our salaries and equipment and things like that. But I do, um, wanna look at, um, maintaining a competitiveness. Otherwise, it's it's pretty easy for someone to say I could just go to another agency, do the same job, but get paid, you know, quite a bit more. So I do wanna look at that this year. From our budget, we're looking at, um, not asking for the investigation vehicle and the thirteenth officer position. We have never, we've almost never had that filled. It's been so hard to fill and find somebody for that. Um, we're considering just not asking for that position. Um, and in exchange for looking at, you know, seeing if we can be a little more competitive with our salary. Um, looking at the Park County Sheriff's Office, um, I've worked over there for a while. They've had some real issues where the sheriff um, has got their salaries competitive, but to do that, he's had to really cut back on employees to the point that they work nine AM to nine PM. Um, they've really cut services there. Obviously, they'll still come out in emergencies for calls and things. But, um, to be competitive with salaries, there there was a trade-off for cutting services and great agency, and I feel for those guys, cause they got twenty-two thousand square miles to cover. It's the size of the state of Delaware over there, so. Same thing with Beena Vista. Sometimes you only have one or two guys we can put on the streets. Special events and things like that. It's a big ask for officers and and that's why you're seeing such a huge, I think, amount of overtime. And I'll work real quick, um, while Commander Garcia talks about vehicles, um, but those are a couple of the projects and key changes for twenty twenty-four.
Uh, just to piggyback off of what Chief was saying, we are asking for two because they, the both vehicles fall within the town's uh retention policy on replacement. Uh, the code enforcement vehicle off the top of my head is over a hundred thousand miles. And for an administrative vehicle like that, the schedule, uh, we try to get, move on from those at ninety thousand miles. And the same is, uh, applies to the investigator's vehicle. That vehicle is bought new, so it had mileage on it already, but it's up to about eighty-three thousand miles. So it's in that window between eighty and ninety thousand on an administrative vehicle, which is why we're asking for that. But really, Chief said, that's something uh, to gain some wiggle room in the budget. We postpone that for another year in order to uh uh free up some monies, uh, just because being short-staffed, we haven't had the investigator in that vehicle most, we normally, or we should have, so it hasn't been used. Uh, but when we are full staff and we anticipate being there at the end of this year, uh, once he's able to move in that position full-time, it'll be getting more use, but we can kick that can down the road for another year if need be on that vehicle. Then it all piles up in the end. So next year, we'd have to ask for two again, because we'll have a marked patrol car that'll be due um, next year as well. That's, that's why we're asking for two vehicles though, uh, this year.
Hey, Sean.
We have to understand some change.
Uh, thank you all. Planning Department shouldn't take too long, um, cause we're still getting our feet wet with the processes and things. Um, we're fully staffed, uh, there's no, no proposed staff changes next year. Hopefully, um, we'll be able to, over the course of the year, reduce some of our expenses related to planning consultant. Anyhow, uh, RG and Associates. Uh, which we're excited about, but we have to, um, our planner Juan, Caroline's coming on board next week and Jamie's here, and so we're, we're getting things going. Um, last year, uh, some of the highlights, you guys know, we had the Carbonette Street Phase One, which is approved. Uh, we're fully staffed and then we also took a look at the approval of water allocation policy and are moving, uh, moving forward with some of the water. Uh, kind of planning, if you will, and merging the planning and the water together. And we are also officially at Town Hall East, although we're putting up some boards and getting a TV and things. A, I don't say a monitor, not a TV. DVD player and. Uh, some of the challenges and, um, so one thing we're really trying to focus on is reestablishing some processes within planning department over the course of the last fifteen years. There've been lots of fits and starts of processes and ways to organize things and billing permits and et cetera, et cetera. And so um, things get very busy and, uh, we're taking the opportunity with our staff, who are super organized people to really kind of create checklist and, um, help, help with processes for for us as well as the client, the townspeople come in. We have a lot of subdivisions that we're wo- working on, major subdivisions, maybe five, and then we've got uh, lots of minor subdivisions that are all coming in at the same time. Um, cause a moratorium lift, which is absolutely fine. We're just working through things. Uh, we also, one challenge, we don't have that comp plan, but twenty twenty-four, we're working on putting that out to bid in the fall so that we can do that for, um, twenty twenty-four, that whole process. We should be breaking ground on the Carbonette Street next year. Uh, we also, we're gonna go through water courts starting in October. Hopefully, we'll begin that process. Uh, the rodeo grounds should be, you know, the petition for annexation should happen. Probably twenty twenty-three even, but we'll continue that process. Working on water and then we're also working on a, again, it's part of that organization, but to track the developer fees and collect them. There's a lot of them aren't being collected, but then we can work them into our budget. Will increase our revenue from two thousand dollars to more than.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's, uh, the planning department.
Any questions for Joel? Guess you're okay.
Well, make sure you leave some time for Shane and Jack.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, everybody so far said they're gonna be quick and they worked, so. Now, we'll see how it goes. Um, yeah, like, like everybody else, um, fully staffed, public works department, so it's, it's been a while and I and I got, I had a couple of opportunities to play, take compliments to the team that we have. They're, they're very skilled and diverse and um, kind of this, uh, you know, well-balanced, um, equals the system with, with unique skill sets and and feel so fortunate to have a team around us. Yeah, we have a lot of people out there, fifteen full-time and one seasonal. And, uh, this seasonal shouldn't be taken for granted. That's Jesse. He takes care of the cemetery. He's done a fantastic job for the last two years and um, that's been, you know, one of the areas where we've, you know, really, really, um, you know, try to focus on it. So, yeah, um, geographic block. So thank goodness I live in a community like this where people wanna live in it, so it's been helpful. Um, highlights, yeah, I think we're all pretty aware where we're at. Um, a lot of cool things have been happening this year. It's kind of cool to kind of put this stuff together, cause you can see, you know, when you feel like maybe you're not getting anything done and you put together a report like, oh, cool, we actually got some things done. So um, it's been a pretty fantastic year. Wrapping up some really cool projects right now, Charles Street Landscape Project, for example. Water plant expansion, getting an electrician in for well three to fix the, uh, you know, the, the final um, steps for upgrading our our power supply for our, upgrading our, uh, our well pumping, um, capabilities. So. Um, challenges and opportunities, yeah, each, each, uh, each bullet point is a challenge and an opportunity. It's kind of unique how I, 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 you know. It's, it just lands that way, you know, it just, and that's, you know, keeping pace with development and public demand, um, and, you know, kind of the list goes on. I think, um, I think one of the things that, that, that I see and and Dean touched on it. And, you know, we do have a pretty fantastic team right now and it's, uh, you know, you know, keeping up, retaining the staff and I think, uh, we've done a fantastic job, so I appreciate all the hard work that you've done and and the, the teams done around us. Um, projects, key changes for twenty-four. See, I'm already at the last one. Yeah, let's get the water plant project done, um, uh, in the fall of twenty-four. That's, that's a big goal. Um, design and planning phase for, for well four, um, should have an R and P out for bid in twenty-four or at the end of this year. Of course, we need to, you know, modify the budget to accommodate that, those construction costs. Um, yeah, and, um, I, I think, uh, there's a few things on there that I kind of wanna try to get done. I've been trying to get done for the last six years and one of them was cleaning up the public works yard. Let's see if we could, I mean, it's not, you know, it just looks a little dangerous there, so I have to invest some money and get that kind of cleaned up and put some things where they go and there's a lot of things out there that don't belong here, so, um, spend a little bit of time to do that. Uh, continue working at the cemetery, you know, that's, um, maybe, uh, opportunity for us to kind of keep the momentum going. We were able to put up the block markers this year with our team. I think, uh, looking at the, uh, the fencing improvements could provide a pretty cool, um, you know, um, it's a dry area, so the, the amenities are structural and things like that, so uh, maybe replace the community, uh, continually fence that's along rodeo roads. So that's one of the things I'd like to do, so. I'll, I'll, I'll answer any questions if you have any.
There's a cross for the Arizona Bridge in twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, so, so that's, that's being advertised again right now. So we'll see how that goes.
Hopefully, yes. Thanks.
Thanks. Alright, so for the recreation department, um, just started off with our general, um, mission statement there, um, you know. We cover a lot of, uh, wide, um, responsibilities in our department, including recreation programs, special and applications. Um, facilitating our, uh, recreation resources, uh, managing reservations and then working with our different advisory boards. Um, we currently have, um, four full-time and three part-time employees. Um, ending the hiring process that we have the application deadline due today. Um, but by the end of the year, we're gonna be at four full-time, three part-time. Um, but still looking to expand that staffing structure to cover all our responsibilities and, um, help promote that sustainable work-life balance that we've been working for the last few years, but still, you know, a little ways to go. Um, highlights for this year, um, we added a number of new programs, which was one of our department goals for the year. Um, we added a cooking class, uh, youth nature class. And we expanded our adult basketball league to also include a women's basketball league. Um, or, um, before the end of the year, we're gonna purchase an enclosed special event, uh, equipment trailer, um, for include increased security and easier event execution, rather than loading up our trailer, unloading it, loading it, unloading it. We'll keep it all inside the trailer and make things a lot easier for Leslie. Um, this year, we've secured eight hundred and forty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars in grant funding. I can't remember if I did this before or after our latest grant.
I think that's before.
Okay, so that number plus another twenty thou- twenty thousand, um, that we just got recently. Um, and then, uh, including our largest ever grant from GOCO, um, we hired two part-time staff members. Again, that was a little optimistic, but we'll, we'll definitely get that done by the end of the year. Um, and, you know, I've kind of considered this, um, kind of a building year for our capital improvement projects. Uh, like Philip said, we, we roll a lot over. Um, that's cause, you know, it takes a little while to secure the funds, so. Um, this is kind of, uh, you know, we haven't knocked out a large number of projects, but we've got a lot coming up here soon, which leads us into, um, our challenges and opportunities. Um, you know, we have a high demand for outdoor spaces. Um, you know, Big Family Park in the Legacy Stage are getting a lot of use this year with that new improvement. Um, seasonal help and compensating them is a big struggle for us, um, softball umpires especially. Um, limited field and gym space and balancing, um, water demand with recne- or water needs with recum- rec demand for those facilities. Um, you know, we need a lot of grants to get all the different projects done, um, managing those capital projects. Um, you know, with all the inflation that we're seeing, um, and then, you know, working with our community groups, um, you know, we've got about four, at least four different, four or five different community groups that we work with on a pretty regular basis. For, so for twenty twenty-four, we're gonna elevate Annie Carlson from Facilities Assistant to Recreation Admin Assistant. Um, you know, she's gonna start helping out, you know, she's begun a little bit of those tasks already, helping us with our marketing. Um, kind of taking that responsibility off Tucker and Caitlin for bringing up some hours for them. Um, and just again, help cover, you know, the domain administrative demands, you know, when you get a bunch of grants, you gotta do a great, a lot of grant reporting, so. Um, helping us with that. Um, and, um, so twenty twenty-four, we wanna complete a lot of those projects like Billy Cordova Memorial Park, Pocket Wave two point O, and all the River Park projects that, um, are have fun. We've got the fun, we, or most of those are fo- are funded, just kind of working on, um, a little bit extra, um, to finish those up and get going in twenty twenty-four. Um, one department goal for twenty twenty-four is to develop a master plan. Um, for rec, um, parks, trails and open space with a lot of community input and and some discussion and, uh, community surveying about future funding strategies. Um, and then just also, you know, the new challenge managing departments with staffs in two different facilities. Any questions?
You guys are doing well.
Uh, save the best for last. Even mayor and trustees and staff. Alright, so. Mouse?
Uh, down arrow on the, oh, there you go.
Okay.
That works.
Okay, here's our slide. I'll let you just read the summary up top and you can look at the vision while you're doing that. A little history, these, uh, our airport basically started in the early sixties. Um, and by the GA that we know today, around nineteen eighties, that was through uh, a lot of town acquisitions when they bought, you know, bought the airport and various other land acquisitions. We are now at a hundred and eighty-four acres out there. And, um, we accommodate, and this allows, and we're at the point now, in, you know, two thousands and onwards, that we accommodate, you know, uh, general aviation, jet traffic, military operations and testing. So it's grown quite significantly over a number of decades. Our main funding, as Philip mentioned before, was FAA, C dot, um, our own sales, fuel, and of course, we get some help from the town. So the big thing takeaway from the, keep an eye on the vision is, part of our vision is recognize the economic, be recognized as an economic engine for the town, up in the midst of the county, and develop the infrastructure for future business. Bigger aviation, military operation and testing. So just keep that in our minds as I go through our presentation. That's what we're, our goals are as we progress through and sort of push that airport forward and make it grow. Alright, so last year, uh, well, this year coming up, um, we are now currently right in the middle of one of the bigger projects we're doing. We're doing the apron tie-down rehabilitation and that's ongoing as we speak. They just milled off, which for lack of a better word, grinding off the old pavement, get ready to pay for the new one. So we'll have that done this year. Um, within a few weeks, as well as moving our fence line. So I think in two thousand seventeen, I would say we bought property, the Grindle Prop- I think in two thousand seventeen, I would say we bought property, the Grindle property, which allows us to move the fence over. And that will give us real estate to build hangar for future development. As well as down in the south, the south end, the Carpenter area. And that was purchased a few years prior to that. That fence line has been moved, so that, those fence lines have been pretty stagnant for a number of years. It's. Been in the budget year after year to move. We're finally gonna get them moved. So what is, uh, we'll be able to start developing hangars and that will generate air traffic and revenue. Um, so hopefully that'll all be done by the end of October. Uh, as well as right now, we're putting in new camera systems and, uh, this, uh, we've, I've had a chance to look at some of those and they're great. Optics. A few months back, we did have an incident out there where the Chaffey County Shuttle Service got vandalized. So these cameras, hopefully, will be up soon. Uh, that, well, it happens, at least we'll find out who and what, when. Uh, this summer, whilst we did not have a, our fly-in. Because it was gonna conflict with the construction that we're doing. We did have hats, uh, which was a big event. We did. This year we combined it with some cars. Also, we had the automobile rally and, uh, Mozenrod, so we still managed to get a few events in. So some of our challenges, uh, you can see I like, we're highlighted, short-term, mid-term, long-term. I won't go too much into the long-term, but our big prob, big thing that we're gonna be going after. In the short midterm is our new fuel, fuel island. Starting in twenty twenty-four, we're gonna start searching for revenue sources for that as well as design phase, so. This, I'm looking at twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six to develop this new fuel island. And if all the pieces fall into place by the end of twenty twenty-six, we'll have a new fuel island. Um, so some of the funding, the FA will not fund that at all. CDOT is willing to. Fund some of that up to a maximum four hundred thousand, but that comes with a fifty-fifty match. Not like the other FAA and CDOT, which is a ninety-ten match. It's fifty-fifty. Um, one of the other avenues we'll explore is DOLA. We'll look at some of that. As well as, um, there's a state infrastructure bank loan and I'll get with Philip and we'll discuss that, but I did talk to CDOT today. So that, that is a possibility, uh, if we give him a, a sort of year advance. Either twenty-six, twenty-five, we could look at applying for that. Currently, it runs at a three percent interest rate. And, you, you know, you can borrow a million up to, I think, a max of five million. Our fuel island running around two million. So, three percent, and you have a maximum of ten years to pay that back. So again, that, that'll be flushed out of, as we get closer to the reality of a new fuel island. Um, that, that really is the, our big push for the next couple of years. And that means we're gonna scale back some, some of the stuff that we do at the airport, um. As I, I've been saying at the airport, if it doesn't make us money, we, we won't be doing it. We need to sort of tighten our belts. Think, uh, you know, try and save up as much money as we can, excuse me, for this fuel island. The other big ticket thing that we're looking at, um, staffing-wise, we're good at the current op tempo. We can handle it the way we are. We have two full-time employees and three part-time. I think we can handle it the way we are. But as I mentioned about the vision, if we, and over the last, since two thousand eighteen, we've looked at about a thirty-five percent increase in operations. And if we wanna maintain that and grow it as well as, you know, push our vision. It may not be sustainable the way we are structured right now with the staff, like two, uh, two full-time, three part-time. We may need. You know, another part-time and more part, or another. But right now, we're good. Um, the only thing I would, uh, propose is. Right now, our staffing, we're, we're, we're pegged at grade levels that, um. Probably aren't sufficient for what we're asking our folks to do. We're asking a lot of long hours, especially in the summer, and it's the same song. Everybody preaches summer specially. But the regulations and all the, uh, things that go on around an airport have increased. Uh, safety has been a, uh, big factor in FA documentation that, so. We're asking a lot for, say, a line tech that had a grade level two. We wanna propose, uh, to bump them up to a three, uh, and, uh, right now, we were. Very blessed to have Nick, our new line tech that took over for TAD, make him a senior line tech, which would be a four. And of course, bring our op specialist, Shona, up to operations, uh, this, uh, instead of airport specialist, airport operations up to a level six. I don't see that as a giant impact or a big impact on the budget. It just puts them in a new class. And right now, we're already paying our folks because of longevity. Sort of at the bottom mid-level of those classes I just mentioned. So it's not gonna be a big impact on the budget, but it will, I think, go a long way to. Uh, keeping people that are doing a great job as well as, as they inevitably will move on to attract, you know. Uh, talented, um, skilled employees that you can count on. So that's our, I would say those are the two main things that we're looking at for our budget in the, the, especially twenty-four and. Off through to twenty-six. Uh, key things in twenty twenty-four, um, I've already mentioned. The fuel island, we're gonna start that process. I'll look in, explore the, uh, SIB or the state infrastructure bank loaning. Um, we're also gonna look at new, there's always every day, every year, new equipment. Um, we're, we've got a snowplow this year, so we've got a few other unique items. What we call a tug-to-pull aircraft. It's pretty much, uh, it's on its last leg as well as a. Remote, uh, DPU. It's like a giant generator start aircraft, so both of those. But again, I'm not saying we're gonna do this in twenty-four. We can buy one, one year, one another year, but. Those are things that we have to always keep in our mind that will, that will be an expense. Um, not everything costs money. We're looking at more efficient way, and this is one of the reasons I wanna take, uh, our op specialist and put her, bump it up is. We're taking more and more control over finance, but it does come at a, you know, a cost. Uh, this staff hours to do that. Uh, also, App Fuel is, and by the end of the year, they might come out with a new add-on software, which might help us with that, so we're gonna explore that. Um, also, um. The, uh. If we're gonna buy these fuel islands and all these other things, we, I, myself and Shonda will have to very much dive deeper into. Revenue sources like other grant systems other than the FAA and, uh, DOLA and whatever other systems are out there. So I see us spending a very, uh, a lot of time in the next year, looking at grants, writing grants. Finalizing grants, so it's gonna be a lot of back office work. Um, which again is why we're up in, up in some of the, putting more emphasis on what Shonda does, like a level six and. Pushing some of that, what she does and I do, down to a, uh, a senior line tech. To sort of run the day operations, so we can sort of get ahead of it and look farther. Get away from me being more of a tactical operation, more of a strategic operation, so. Uh, that's basically it for us. Uh, you can see the bullet points. I, if there's any questions, I'd certainly entertain. Okay.
Thanks to all your department heads. That was a very concise rundown on the, on the budget.
Thank you.
So we can take a little break, um, three minutes and start at seven o'clock.